Okay, friends, I'm going to call this Celine City Council Work Meeting to Order at 6:01 PM on March the 20th. Members present are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members CO, Dylan, Gearbaugh, McClellan, Mitchell, and Mayor Protem Tahar. From city staff, we have city manager Campout, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, city superintendent engineer Rubel, DPW director Fordice. Deputy Treasurer McDonough is here, as well as wastewater treatment superintendent Skull. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, if you'd be so kind to sign in the back to my left, we would appreciate that. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, noting that we are going to take up the preliminary report from Webster Environmental First, which I anticipate will take up the bulk of this work meeting. Then, when we have exhausted everyone's questions and concerns, we will transition to capital improvements, continuing our discussion from our last meeting. So is there a motion to approve the agenda as submitted? Move was that Dylan?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Seconded by Gearbaugh. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Perhaps for our guests' benefit, let's work our way around the table and introduce ourselves. There might be a few new faces from when you were last here in December or November. So Mayor Brian Morrow.
Secretary Morrow.
How are you, Congresswoman?
Jay Zong.
Dean Gearbaugh.
Last call.
Jim Ross with Webster Environmental.
I'm Brian Rubel with Tetra Tech.
I'm Kristen Mitchell.
I'm Dr. Hahn.
I'm Seal.
I can't hear you.
Excellent. So with that, do you want to start it off, or do you want to turn it over to our guests?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the preliminary report from Webster, as they've been working on the overall odor study. You may recall, there were two different odor sampling events. One was in November for cold weather, and then another one scheduled for late June, early July, for the warm weather. And then there would be the final report put out. But obviously, the importance of this item, and as we worked towards resolving it, we wanted to certainly get this information to you, so you understand as we proceed to go forward. So I think hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to at least review it a little bit. And Jim from Webster has a presentation to go through. Unless there's any questions of me, I would like to turn over to Jim, and then also, of course, partnering with Tetra Tech at some level, too.
Here's what I'd like to do. Jim, the floor is going to be yours. Take as much time as you want. Obviously, your company has a very impressive reputation, excuse me, and we want you to be very thorough in going over the preliminary report. When you're done with your presentation, we'll entertain comments from Mr. Brian Rubel from Tetra Tech, and any additional comments from wastewater superintendent director. What's going on with this mic? Excuse me. Mr. Skull, and then we'll work our way around today as questions and concerns.
Thank you.
So as was stated, the purpose of this presentation is to give a very high-level overview of the preliminary report that's been submitted. And we can go into as much detail as you want through the Q and A session. I'll try to provide the general analysis and the results of what we found at this point, and then we can do more detailed questions as they're running. So what's already been stated is that we've done the round one sampling and testing. There are two rounds of sampling included in this study, one being the cool weather, one being the warm weather. The cool weather was done at the end of November.
Don't you need to start over?
No, you're fine.
Okay.
We've conducted the analysis of those round one samples, and then from there, we've done a preliminary odor dispersion modeling. We've done the preliminary analysis of odor control alternatives, and then preliminary conclusions and recommendations. We've also teamed with Tetra Tech, who has done the odor complaint investigation tasks associated with this study as well. And we've submitted all of that in the preliminary draft report. So the sampling and testing program, we looked at all the processes at the wastewater treatment plant, as well as the south side pump station wet well. And each one of those processes, and at the pump station, we conducted air testing. We also conducted liquid sampling as well, to try to identify what is the compounds in each of the air streams coming off of there, and what can be done to treat those compounds so they don't cause odor complaints outside the fence line of the plant or the pump station. In addition to that, we conducted odor control performance testing for each of the existing odor scrubbers that are at the wastewater treatment plant. So I know the font here is going to be hard to read from where you're seated, so I'll just describe the major parts of this slide here. But that pie chart represents the contribution of each of the significant odor processes, or significant processes at the wastewater treatment plant, that are contributing to odors at the plant. On the right side is listed all the processes that we tested as a part of this sampling and testing program. The pie chart there, I'll just list off the ones that are of most significance. The large blue section of that pie chart is one of the chemical scrubbers. It's manufactured by a company called Duall, and so we're just calling it the Duall Chemical Scrubber. That accounts for a significant portion, as you can see, of the odors coming from the plant. The red section of that pie chart is predicted emitted odors, because that is associated with the septic receiving facility. But that facility was not online during our cool weather testing, so we don't have actual data associated with that. But based on previous testing of similar processes, we're predicting what may be coming from that if the exhaust fan was turned on, the facility was operational. Next to that is the grit facility and its associated channels. That's the -- I'm not good with some of these colors, maybe yellow. And then next to that is the purple, that's the headworks building. And the last significant portion of that pie chart is the other chemical scrubber. That's manufactured by a company called ERA Tech, and we'll talk more about the chemical scrubbers here shortly. But that just gives you an overall view of the contribution, what is causing odors at the treatment facility, and in what relative contribution they're contributing to the total odor. I did have a statement on the bottom there, saying the total odor from the plant really is in the low to moderate range relative to other wastewater treatment plants. And what I mean is, we do these studies all over the country, and actually all over the world, but this plant, really, relative to other plants, it's not in the high range. It's in the low to moderate range as far as the total odors coming from the facility. It appears to be well-run, but you do have neighbors that are right there on your fence We did hydrogen sulfide testing as well at various processes throughout the plant. I'll just talk about two of those, and why that has significance to this study. Hydrogen sulfide, we use as an indicator compound, so it's easy to measure, and it indicates the presence of odors and other odorous compounds that you can't identify unless you take a sample and send it to a lab. Well, that's not -- you can't take samples 24/7 sending them to a lab, so you have to be able to do something to monitor what's going on during the evening hours, early morning hours, over a week period. So that's what we did. We installed hydrogen sulfide monitors and left them in place at several locations within the treatment plant and at the pump station, and left them in place for a week. And they continually monitored the hydrogen sulfide coming off from these different processes. And that allows us to see, is there something going on in the middle of the night that we didn't catch, or in the early morning, or whatnot. So like I said, I'm not going to get too much detailed into these graphs, but what is of importance, these two charts show the hydrogen sulfide that goes into the airstream of each of the existing chemical scrubbers. So it's a major amount of air that's being pulled from various processes that are going into these scrubbers, and we're measuring what is the concentration going in to each one of these chemical scrubbers. The top-left one is the Duall Chemical Scrubber, and the average hydrogen sulfide there was around four -- I can't even read it myself. It's around four parts per million, which is really not -- it's not that high. I'm not saying it doesn't cause odors, I'm just saying relative to other facilities, it's not that high. This is a good thing, because it gives us options for treatment that wouldn't be available if it was significantly high. The one on the bottom right is the other chemical scrubber, the ERA Tech, and it's pulling from other processes, and it's even lower than that. The average there was less than one part per million. So we did performance testing on the existing chemical scrubbers. The first one we'll talk about is the Duall Chemical Scrubber. It pulls from the grit facility, the grit channels, and the west primary clarifier. The design airflow versus the actual airflow was very close to what it's pulling, the amount of air it's pulling is very close to what it was designed to do. But if you look at the next bullet points, the H2S removal, and H2S is hydrogen sulfide. So the design of these systems should be that you're removing about 99% of the hydrogen sulfide in that airstream. But the actual testing revealed that it's only removing about 20% or less of the hydrogen sulfide. The age of that system is over 20 years old, and the condition of that system is poor. It's got -- it's very corroded, there's a lot of rust associated with that, and that's not unusual for systems of this age that are chemical scrubbers. And the way they work is they use caustic chemicals, corrosive chemicals, that oxidize the airstream as it goes through. So by nature, it corrodes, and so they don't last forever. The other chemical scrubber that's existing there, that's in use, is the ERA Tech Chemical Scrubber. It pulls from the rotating biological contactors that are there on-site and the east primary clarifier. The design, original design airflow was 10,000, CFM is cubic feet per minute. The design airflow was 10,000 CFM. The actual airflow that we tested was much less than that, 6,850. The design H2S removal, again, should be greater than 99%, and we found it to be somewhere around 85%, so much better than the other one, but still not where it should be. The levels of H2S going into this system actually were very, very low, and so it's unknown if they were to be higher, if it could still achieve the 85% that we were measuring. The system is about 17 years old, and again, the condition, similar to the other one, is poor. There is significant corrosion, there is significant leakage of corrosive chemicals that are coming down out of the system. We tried to reach the original manufacturer of the system to inquire about rehabilitating the system. The original manufacturer is no longer in business. So we conducted odor dispersion modeling of the facility, including the south side pump station. The left diagram, or figure rather, that has the white contours with the numbers on it, what that's showing is, an odor dispersion model is an EPA air dispersion model is what it is, and we use it to predict how odors might disperse from any source. It could be an industry, a wastewater treatment plant, whatever it is. In this situation, it's the wastewater treatment plant. We take the sampling results that we got back, that have these various odor concentrations that are at the different processes, and enter it into that odor dispersion model. That model utilizes local terrain data and local meteorological data, for one year's worth of local meteorological data and the existing terrain data. And then it goes through, and it looks, and it predicts what is the worst-case scenario. And again, so this is being overly conservative, but it's predicting what is the worst-case scenario of what the treatment plant could produce as far as odors go, under certain meteorological conditions. So it goes through each hour of the whole year, looking at different meteorological conditions, and it says, okay, under these conditions, how far could an odor go out, and what strength could it be? So it's predicting, those numbers are all, they indicate the strength of an odor. And so it's indicating that odors, there are detectable odors that definitely would be beyond the fence line, and on some days, they could go well beyond the fence line. The yellow model, the yellow contours, is frequency contours, and instead of trying to determine what is the worst odor that you could ever smell on any day of the year, it's looking at how many times could a person ever detect any kind of an odor? And it might just be a whiff of something going by, and very mild, almost non-detectable. And it's counting up those throughout the year. And so that model is predicting that offsite, there are times, many times in a year, where you could, in fact, detect an odor. You may not detect it, but it could be there. That's what it's predicting. So the next thing is to look at odor control design parameters. If all of the foul air was to be collected from the offending processes, and to be sent to a treatment system for treatment, what would that need to look like? How big of a system would that be? How much air needs to be pulled? So I know there's a lot of numbers up here, but the bottom line is, for the wastewater treatment odor control system, we just went through all the different processes, and we calculated a required airflow that would need to be pulled from each process. And we added it all together, and you get an airflow of 17,500 cubic feet per minute would need to be pulled to be able to be treated, to effectively treat the air at the plant. Currently, the amount of air that's being treated, or being pulled, is about 11,000 CFM, and it's not being effectively treated. The H2S removal efficiency, if you look at where it says H2S removal efficiency, and below that says outlet, we would be expecting a system that would be effectively treating, it should be treating about 99% of the hydrogen sulfide coming out of the stack of that system. Similarly, at the south side lift station odor control system, we calculated that the airflow to treat the air in that wet well, would need to be about 600 CFM. So obviously, this is a very smaller system, this is a separate system than the treatment plant, very small system, and again, the outlet removal efficiency would need to be somewhere around 99%. So we looked at various odor control alternatives. We looked at four different technologies. What would be the most effective way, cost-effective way, to treat these odors at both the plant and the south side lift station? The four different technologies we looked at, and all these technologies would provide effective treatment. We wouldn't evaluate one that doesn't provide effective treatment, but now we want to look at which one's the most cost-effective of the effective treatments. So the first one there, odor control alternative one is chemical scrubbing. That would be the exact same technology that's there right now. Odor control alternative two is carbon absorption, and in that type of a system, it's a vessel with truly, you know, carbon, granular carbon inside of it. There's also a variety of other medias that we would also consider as well, one being a, it's a potassium permangonate encrusted zeolite, which is just a rock that has potassium permangonate on it, and probably shouldn't get into all of that right now, but it's a dry media, and the air will pass through, and it will be treated in that way. The third alternative is, the three and four are both biofilters. So these are systems that depend on biological treatment to treat the airstream, that we're looking for the microbes to do the work for us. And these typically are much more cost-effective if you have very high concentrations of hydrogen sulfide and other compounds you're trying to remove, because you're utilizing the microbes to do the work. The odor control alternative three there, organic media biofilter, that's basically, it's a, the media there is organic, so it's a wood-based media. The other, the only difference between three and four is number four is an inorganic media, so that's a, it's a rock that has a particular coating on it, and there's proprietary medias out there. The only benefit of having an inorganic media biofilter is that they have a little bit of a smaller footprint, and the media does not need to be changed as much. You can put them in vessels. However, the only problem is that they're much more expensive. Oh, I'm sorry. And then, all of these options include a carbon system at the south side pump station. So these technologies are all associated with the wastewater treatment plant. So we looked at a 20-year lifecycle cost analysis for each one of the alternatives that, to treat odors at the plant, for a 17,500 CFM system at the wastewater treatment plant, and a 600 CFM system at the south side pump station. The ones we boxed in red are the ones that are, came out to be the winners of this analysis. If you look at the odor control alternative one and four on the outside, you can see that, does this have a laser on it? It does not, okay. The first yellow row that's there, it says total capital cost. If you just run across there, odor control alternative one turned out to be $2.5 million, much more expensive than the other two. Alternative two, 1.93, alternative three, 2, and alternative four, 2.86. So automatically, we're throwing out one and four, we say two and three, they're very similar in cost. And the other analysis that we do is to look at it as a, on a 20-year lifecycle cost analysis. So amortize that total capital cost over 20 years, and also add the O and M cost for each one of those options, and that's the bottom yellow row, if you can see it. And those two costs represent over a 20-year period, what's the cost of that system, to give you something to compare them to. And again, they're very, very similar. And this being a study-level estimate, I would expect that these numbers are very, very similar in nature. So our preliminary recommendations. Number one, conduct the round two testing in July to obtain warm weather data and to obtain actual data associated with the septic receiving facility, so we know what we've got. If the hydrogen sulfide concentrations don't exceed the predicted values that we currently are looking at, and what we believe will be there over a year's period, then we would recommend to go with odor control alternative number two. That's the carbon system. And the reason for that is that the carbon system provides the highest level of treatment, and it is the, it is the simplest to operate. But you can only really use that option if the concentrations remain in where we think they're going to be. If they greatly exceed that, then carbon becomes a more expensive option. We'd have to reevaluate that after the round two testing. The third bullet point says, if the hydrogen sulfide concentrations significantly exceed what the predicted values are, then our recommendation would be odor control alternative three, which is the organic media biofilter. And that simply is the way the numbers will shake out, is that if the hydrogen sulfide goes very high, then the biofilter would end up being a more cost-effective option. The numbers that we show would end up teetering towards the biofilter being cheaper. So the odor control alternative two, the carbon, that's what, in general, what one would look like. There may be one vessel, or maybe two. If this was preceded with, they may be able to be placed inside of the odor abatement building, or it might be more cost-effective to place them in another location on the facility. This is something to be considered. Also, for maintenance and O and M, it might be desired to be outside of that building. What you see there on the right is they, we reran the model with all of those areas, all those sources treated in the carbon system, and the top is the predicted peak odor strengths now, which have dramatically reduced, and then the predicted odor frequencies, it did not predict any detectable odors. I do want to say this, though, that does not mean that the wastewater treatment plant would never have an odor detected, again, if this was implemented, because it is a wastewater treatment plant. Maintenance does have to be done, hatches do have to be open, systems do have to be taken offline. There are things that are outside the control of this that can happen, but the reality of it would be a dramatic reduction, is what ultimately is the message. If the hydrogen sulfide were to increase significantly, we would recommend going with the biofilter option. That looks like what you see on the left there. It's shredded wood. This is one in Florida that we had recently designed and installed, and we used an existing tank that could be an option for the Celine wastewater treatment plant. They have an existing abandoned trickling filter that could be used, or we would just look at it and see. Sometimes it's cost-effective to use an existing tank, sometimes it's not, so we would just have to look at that. The odor dispersion modeling was run using a biofilter. I know from where you're sitting, you just see a bunch of lines up there, and it probably looks terrible, but that's, the reality of it is, is that the closest line in towards the plant says 50, whereas the existing was 1,600. And the only reason why it's showing any kind of odors outside of that is the model tends to treat a biofilter with very conservative, with a conservative approach, because the treated air coming off of a biofilter is released at the ground, whereas the carbon system is released through a stack, and so it treats it very differently. Our experience is, we have never had a complaint associated with a biofilter. The air coming off of there, it's treated, you're not going to, it's not going to be a problem, and if there is any kind of smell, it smells like the woods. It's going through wood, and there's trees around, it's just, we've never had an issue with that. So our preliminary conclusions is that the odors emanating from the wastewater treatment plant are low to moderate relative to other wastewater treatment plants that we, that's us, has tested. The plant appears to be well-run. The problem, though, is that you have odor control systems that are failing, and you have neighbors right on the fence line. Second bullet, however, odors are predicted to be detectable beyond the fence line under existing conditions. The third bullet, the existing odor scrubbers are near the end of their useful life and not providing sufficient treatment of the foul air streams. They are likely the cause of the increased odor complaints. The fourth bullet there, the city is currently spending $77,000 a year on chemicals and water for the existing scrubbers. This annual cost can be cut in half by using either the carbon system or the biofilter. And then the last bullet there, the south side pump station is predicted to be causing offsite odors as well, and therefore, it's included in the recommendations. A potential schedule could be that the round two testing would be conducted in July, the final report would be submitted in August. If there was a proceeding to a design stage, we would anticipate that to be about a seven month effort. That could be initiated as soon as September. And if that was all done, and that was completed in March of 2018, then construction could commence in April 2018, and we anticipate a 12-month construction period. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Jim. Let's start to my left, Mr. Brian Rubel, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time?
Do you want me to hear, or hear?
Why don't you take a seat, all of you. I want to make sure everyone utilizes the microphone, you are recording this meeting, and of course, we want to make sure that one of the audience heers is able to participate in our discussion.
No, I, this was a Webster's report, so they're the authors of the report, so they're the best ones that can comment and answer questions. I will say that, perhaps I could give advice on timing of construction, should you wish to proceed, because the low-interest loan program that the city has used in the past has one date a year that you can submit an application. So if you miss that date, you have to wait a whole other year.
When is that date?
So I first. And with a 30-day public notice period, that deadline is really right upon us. So if you were interested in proceeding to construction, I would recommend putting an application in the spring.
How specific do you have to be for an application that's July 1?
Not terribly. So I think there's latitude there, that if the summer testing were to expand or shrink the scope, that application should still be valid. We can do it the way that it should.
My hunch is that something has to be done. There might be some debate currently what that is, but something's going to need to be done.
Right. I believe you would be safe to submit the application June of this year, and by the time their testing is finalized, you would still be in line then for funding.
Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Do you want to pass the microphone down to Mr. Skull? Bob, do you have any comments at this time?
Just one point of clarification. The odors are not coming from the scrubbers. The scrubbers are drawing the odors from the other process. I just want to make it clear that the scrubbers are not causing odor, they're just not effectively removing the odor.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to open it up for questions and comments. I usually go last, but I'm going to begin this evening, and then I'll move to my left, and we'll proceed, or Mr. Seal will proceed, followed by Tahar, and then end with Councilwoman McClellan. First of all, Jim, appreciate your report, and as I indicated in my opening remarks, Webster Environmental Associates Incorporated has an outstanding reputation. You've been doing this, and exclusively this, for many years now. And my understanding is that you do an outstanding job, and you come highly recommended. So we appreciate your attendance and participation this evening. Your report, your presentation was very thorough. I'm going to preface by saying, I'm going to be very reticent to comment on a lot of issues tonight, mainly due to the fact that I want to see additional data, and I'll be prepared for probably some more protracted remarks and sentiments subsequent to your summer evaluation and review. to your, your summer evaluation and review of the plant. First, I have no doubt that when you compare our facility to existing facilities throughout the region, throughout the nation, we probably do do a better, an above-average job controlling odors. But at the same time, that, that probably provides very little comfort to the residents who are in the immediate vicinity of, of our wastewater treatment plant. And I think that there's, I don't think there's any debate that, that something needs to be done. If I had been a betting man, well, I, I, I agree with you that probably most of the issues to date are a result of our dual odor scrubbers not working properly. And I guess that leads me to my first question, which you're welcome to, to chime in on, Mr. Ruble, but it's probably more for, for Bob. The dual odor scrubbers obviously should be, should be removing some of the odors and impurities, but when they don't work, and again, Bob, I'm not an expert, but when they don't work properly as the data is, is currently indicating, are they in fact making the situation worse?
I think what they're doing is they are taking the odors that would normally be around the plant and pushing them up into the air. I suspected that for quite a while. We had dual out to increase the fan capacity. That's why the design capacity for air movement is about the same, but the removal rate's not there. So yeah, I believe it's making it more widespread.
Yeah, that, that would be correct. If, if they weren't running it all, then you would have more concentrated odors closer to the plant.
It's on, it's on, Gary.
But by putting it up through a stack with that velocity, that plume then can, then travel to different areas and that's what you're seeing.
Okay. Then the other comment that I will make, as it relates to, I think it was slide number two or three, it was a pie chart which you, based on your preliminary findings, you sort of denote with a percentage what you think is contributing to the overall odor issue. And I want to touch on the septage receiving for, for just a moment because this is an argument that I've heard on and off again for more than a decade, that the receiving of septage contributes significantly to, to the odor issues at the plant. And I'll start by saying, you learn this in debate, any first-year student in law school will tell you this. I don't have to, I'm never obligated to prove a negative. You have to prove to me that something is happening. And so at this point, we don't have data to suggest that the receiving of septage is contributing in any significant way to the odor issues at the plant. What we do have, somewhat anecdotal of course, but Bob would have a, a log of this, and I'm sure he shared it with you, Jim, is over the last two years, year and a half, some of the, the times when we received the most complaints, either verbal phone calls, emails from our residents and business owners regarding odor issues, was periods when we had not been accepting outside septage for months. So the, 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 the product could no longer even be in our system. So I will be interested when your, your subsequent, or when round two begins, I'm assuming that we'll be receiving septage at that time?
We certainly can be.
Okay. I think we need to be.
Okay.
That's my opinion. Now that may, may not be shared.
No, I believe the study, we definitely will. I don't know if, if after the study does indicate that it's contributing a, a problem, then we may have to look at.
Sure. And I'll admit, I'll admit when I'm wrong. And, you know, if facts prove something to me, I'm, I'm willing to respond accordingly. But again, I don't have to prove a negative. I don't have to prove that it's not contributing. So I'll, I'll be interested in, in, in round two of, of your evaluation of the plant. Again, I want to thank you. I'm fine with, with proceeding with the timeline. If there's any way to move more expeditiously, that would be great. But I do think a second evaluation is absolutely critical. We need that data. And as I've said in the past, I think we have done, in, you know, years ago, we did our citizens a disservice by not engaging an outfit like Webster Environmental to come in and do a really thorough evaluation of our process and our plan to pinpoint what the deficiencies so that we could move forward and make a data-driven decision. I use that term ad nauseam, but I think it's absolutely critical. So thank you. Mr. Seale. It's on. Now it's not. What, it needs to be green on the base. Hold that note. There you go.
Thank you. I read through your report at length, including many things that were way over my head in terms of chemical processes and so on. It's a very thorough report. Thank you very much. I recognize that the citizens, especially those who live in the neighborhood, are wanting us to move expeditiously on this, but I also think it's critical to do as you recommend and go through the warm weather testing. I also think it's very important, what Mr. Ruble said, that we make applications as quickly as possible so that we don't miss that July 1st timeframe and put this thing back even another year in terms of scheduling. So I would suggest that, in my opinion, we should hit the July 1st application date and yet wait for the final results from Webster before we conceive a, a final plan on how we are to proceed. But I think too, the citizens deserve us to move forward as expeditiously as possible. But having said that, in order to affect, most effectively accomplish what we need to accomplish, I think, we need the second round of testing and we need to await those results as well to see which of the two recommended processes would be the best suited to what it is we're trying to do.
Thank you, Mr. Seale. Actually, I want to stay on that topic for just a, a moment. Mr. Seale has stated his opinion about applying by July 1st for low-interest loans that Mr. Brian Ruble addressed earlier. I'm certainly in favor of that. You've now expressed your, your sentiments regarding that, which mirror mine. I would like everyone to comment on that because based on what Mr. Ruble said, there is some room for ambiguity in that application. But certainly we're, I, my opinion, we're going to need to do something and that's a, a, a tool that we ought to be utilizing. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Tahar.
Well, so I'll start out by saying yes, I absolutely agree about applying for the low-interest loan program this year. And actually, I agree with everything Mr. Seale has already said, so I won't repeat any of that. I have just a couple of, so also agree with the, much of this was over my head, but, but also very, very informative. So in terms of asset management down the road, you talked about the current odor scrubbers having a 20-year or less life expectancy. So what's the, when would we be looking at, well, perhaps not we, be looking at replacing either one of the new, the new, possible new systems that you might recommend depending on the outcome of the next round of testing?
Right. Well, it, either or, the, the carbon system or the biofilter option will last beyond 20 years. You know, the, the media in, the reason why chemical scrubbers typically fail is because they're dealing, they have corrosive chemicals moving around in them and so by nature, that's what's happening. In a carbon system, you've got a fiberglass reinforced plastic vessel that, that typically lasts a long, long time. And the thing, the only thing that has to be done with them is the media within, inside of them has to be replaced as it, as it's used up. But that's with, that's with anything. But the system itself, you know, I, we always say it's a 20, has a 20-year life to it. You know, carbon systems can go beyond that, though.
And the biofilter system, similar?
Similar, yeah. Because there's going to be a concrete tank that the biofilter will go into and you might have to have, do some miter coatings or repair or something when you change out the media, but the, but the, the concrete tank itself is not going to go anywhere. And so it could last as long as you want it to last.
Okay. One other question. So at, at present time, we have residential building occurring in the middle of the city limits, so there will be additional product for, for the plant to deal with. So I assume that you are, all of your model and proposals will take possible expansion of the city into account?
Well, it certainly can. And the, the question would be, additional flow would not, would not change what we see. Additional, additional detention time in pump station force mains could produce additional hydrogen sulfide. So if the expansion were to include the addition of pump stations farther out, that would be pumping through longer force mains, then that could, down the road, when that occurs, increase the hydrogen sulfide. So that would be something that would need to be considered as we evaluate to go towards the second round of testing. But I don't know if anybody knows the answers to that. I'm looking at you, Bob. I shouldn't be looking at you, I don't know. But it's a good question. Typically, that does not dramatically increase. I, I don't know if you have residents that are far out, this is going to be not receiving flow from, you know, miles away, this has to be pumped in, that's not happening right now, or if you're just talking about additional flow to the existing system.
Well, I, I believe that we would have to look at, at expanding the odor abatement if we had to add additional process tanks, which is simply additional flow.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what you, yes, if we hadn't added additional tanks, that's correct. Yes, we would have to cover and treating air from that. Yeah, I'm taking your question beyond, I think what you're asking.
Because I'm not sure I knew what you were saying.
It's okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Mitchell? It's popping in.
Is this thing on?
Green light needs to be on the base.
There's a red light flickering. Sorry, I don't know.
Yeah, let's, let's swap that out. You're welcome to take five.
Thank you.
They're tired, like many of us. So I, I too want to echo, thank you for, for the report. I think it's important that we make evidence-based decisions and that this kind of information can really be helpful. So thank you. I also had, yes, the July 1st application, fully, fully in support of that. I just want to clarify, do we need to specify which choice we're making on that application? Do we have to know by then? That wasn't clear. Or we have some wiggle room?
There's wiggle.
Okay.
We do have to make a decision, but before you visit that decision.
Oh, excellent. Okay.
The cost, well, even that, if you'd like to know.
Okay.
We just need to get on the list.
I just wanted to make sure. Yes, let's get on the list. The slide with the pie chart, is that, did I miss that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that.
Okay.
You know, when I was, when I was pretty as powerful to get it up, that was a, that's more helpful way to present that data to everybody, that when I, the report just has the table within ranked in their vicinity.
Right.
It does not have that pie chart in there.
Would you be able to forward either your presentation or the slides to Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
And he can, thank you.
And so you would just, you're looking specifically at that pie chart.
That's the specific one I'm interested in. Thank you. I, I heard you talk about lifespan. Have you, what kind of feedback do you have about reliability?
Both of those options are incredibly reliable. They're, yeah, they just work. That's what's nice about them. Like I said again, with a, with a chemical scrubber, there's, there's lots of other moving parts. With a carbon system, there are, there is only a fan. That's the only moving part. With the biological system, there is the addition that you have to have some irrigation on the media, it needs to stay wet, but that's very basic, very simple. And they're, they're, both of those options are very, very reliable.
Okay.
You're not going to have concern with that part.
Okay. It's like buying a new car. It's great. Oh, but it needs some maintenance. That was my worry. So I, I had questions similar to Ms. Tahar about, and, and part of this lies in, this question lies in my ignorance of how are we expanding? So someday we expand. We know we have enough capacity to serve what's in the city currently. And I think if I remember from my tour, we were at 65% Mr. Campbell, about that. And, and so we have to submit a plan to the state at 85%. When we expand, and I don't know to whom, I don't know of whom I'm asking this question, but when we expand, and forgive my ignorance, are we piggybacking on this plant? Are we doing something entirely new and this plant becomes defunct? What, what's the process?
Mr. Scholl, you're probably best equipped to address that. Do you want to?
I mean, like, like the short paragraph.
I, I, I don't know if that decision's been made yet. I know that they're looking at possibly in the future relocate the plant, but that's going to be very expensive.
Exactly.
So I think the initial will be the additional plant processes on this site.
Okay. All right. So investments that we make now are not going to be a waste if, if we suddenly have a lot of expansion and we're, you know, we're, we're expanding within that 20-year lifespan. We're not going to shut this plant down and spend all this money, most likely.
I have a personal ball, but I don't.
Exactly.
So I think we're, it's probably very, it's going to be very expensive to relocate the plant and.
Right.
Whereas where it's always cheaper to add capacity.
Okay.
Is to start a new.
Okay. That is really helpful. do you feel, do you feel comfortable talking, giving us some communities that have undergone this process or even naming some case studies that I could read that, you know, here are how these communities, this is the decision tree and these are the results? Do you have anything like that?
We do, yes.
Lovely. Okay.
And I can, I can get that to you. And I think, I think I presented some of those when I was up last time, if I remember correctly.
I think so. And I just, I'd like to read them, actually.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, no, I can, I can send them.
Okay. Thank you. And that will finish my questions.
So to add to that, Ms. Mitchell, is that one of the things that we talked about in our preliminary discussions with Webster is possibly having a, a field trip, if you will, to actual operating facilities that, that, you know, one, I believe, Grand Haven?
Yeah. Tectra Tech designed a bio system, biological system in Grand Haven and the carbon system at Kellin Zoo. So, you know, within a day or two, I, you can hit up for those.
Right. So if there's interest in that, we could certainly schedule that and, and move forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Girbert?
Just a few questions about process and I think some of the other things. Yes, I agree, we need to go forward with the, the, the request for the loan application. The only question is, is odor abatement considered part of that request? It isn't restricted to certain types of plant processes or something? It is. The other question I had is when you were doing some of the flow or the odor analysis, did you look at any of the flows coming into the plant? Is there anything in terms of odd chemicals or anything that we should be aware of?
We did not see, you know, only what has it associated to odors. So we tested parameters such as pH, total sulfides, the oxidation reduction potential within the liquid. And yes, we took samples right of the inlet and we didn't find anything that was exciting. The only thing that was somewhat exciting is, is the white that we saw in the Southside Pump Station, but even that didn't come back with anything significant that would have said it's causing significant odors.
Just charge from here.
And that was going to be the next lead is that, as you mentioned, the Southside Pump Station, and we have pump stations all over the city, a couple other ones. Is there an issue with that being a special type that it causes or needs to be addressed differently?
I just think the size of the needs need to be addressed. There's a fall from the Inverkin. It's a, it's a much larger web well and it controls 70% of the floor movement of the city. I think that's the, the reason.
That helps. I wasn't sure why it wasn't an issue with our other test marks. My one point of observation that I, I think I need to address and I feel it has to come up at this point, you know, we've gone through massive renovations at this plant in the last two years and this issue wasn't addressed. I'm trying to figure out why. I'm trying to figure out why. Considering everything that we looked at, your company came in and assessed it, why this piece wasn't part of that assessment. That's a concern, because I thought some of this could have been contributing to it because of the redesign of the new plant, different changes in flow and so forth. That's my concern going forward. So that's an issue, a concern that we know these things have to be repaired or replaced and whatever, but it fell through, and this probably should have been addressed three years ago with that team.
Would be why they catch you.
Yeah.
First time I was told about an odor problem was March of 2015, when I came to recommend an award. And immediately thereafter, I visited the plant with my staff. I was never asked to look for it, and as soon as I brought my attention, I thought they did need.
The other concern, just from the odor thing, 15 years ago, 17 years ago, when we first put the odor scrubbers and so forth in... I've lived in that side of the neighborhood since 2000, and it's addressed some of that issue. I'm not saying it fixed the issue next for the neighbors that live next to the plant, but it did solve a lot of that problem. And I think we are, as a result of time, having to fix things, and that's no different than every one of our buildings that we have born. So to make statements that we didn't do something right 20 years ago is incorrect. I think now, though, we've got a better set of numbers, because we needed to do it as a result of redoing the building, the idea of expansion, and all the other aspects. The other question I had, so when we talk about this expansion, you indicated 17,500 cubic square feet or whatever to maintain. Is that allowing for expansion within that amount of ability to treat that kind of capacity in the air, or does it mean that we'll have to expand at some point?
No, that's to treat what you have today. That's to treat all the processes that we tested as of today. So, for example, you have two primary clarifiers that are covered, air is being evacuated from those that have been sent to the scrubbers currently, just not enough, so more of that air. But if you were to add a third primary clarifier, then that would... There's no way... Well, there is a way. We could make the system that much bigger, waiting for that other facility to be built, but that's typically not the best option. What we would propose would be that you can... If you knew that was coming and you knew what was happening in the future, then you could just set aside an area, knowing, and budget obviously, knowing that this... Once you put this next segment online, you're also going to place a cover on it, and you're going to put another odor control system, and they're going to treat all the new stuff that you're going to put in. But without knowing that, it's really... It would be kind of, I don't think it'd be a cost-effective way to use your money.
But what we have right now is kind of looking at what we would expect to be maybe a high aspect of what we would expect to treat. So you're saying this is... Volume is consistent with what we have, so we wouldn't expect something, all of a sudden, if we had a rush of some odd treatment or something, or we had to fix it, and all of a sudden, it would be too low to handle.
Oh, no. No, the only reason why it wouldn't be would be if you're adding another tank, because that, you know, in this situation, we're capturing the air, each of these processes of pulling it and treating it. Additional flow coming into that's not going to change that. It would just be if you had to add another tank, that now you're going to have to treat the air on that tank, well, that's not accounted for.
Okay. That's it for me now.
Is still on?
Thank you. I'll start with a yes on moving forward on the application. And then for questions, let's see. Thank you very much for your report. I have to say that honestly, 90% of it I could not understand. I did appreciate your summary pages, that really helped. Kind of put it... I mean, the charts were just sort of random to me, but I'm sure they mean something to you. So I have some questions that are sort of all over the place to everybody here. One was, have we actually explored previously replacing the odor scrubbers?
No, we have not.
We haven't?
We have not.
Okay.
Actually, I have my CIP budget to replace them, I believe, two years out. I don't think you're going to make that long.
Okay. Okay. And then I want to just touch on expansion first and make sure we're sort of all on the same page of what we mean by that, because I don't know whether we're talking about expansion of the new developments that are already in play and things like that, or are we talking bigger picture expansion? So I guess I'm looking for clarification from the city as well as from our experts.
Let's try this one more time, and Mr. Gary Rubel, or if Mr. Flores would like to comment on this as well, we would welcome that. But my understanding has always been, and Bob, I guess I'm looking for you for affirmation here, but we do have existing capacity for those vacant lots that currently exist within the corporate limits of the City of Saline. When we start talking about annexing parcels from our neighbors, specifically Lodi and Saline Township, which are really the only municipalities eligible for annexation, then we're going to need to start talking and having serious discussions about expanding the capacity at the plant or building a new facility.
Correct. At 85 percent, the state requires us to look at expanding the plant. We have excess capacity for everything within the city limits. It's not an issue. We would be looking at expanding the physical footprint of the plant if we took in the areas outside the city, and then that's where we'd have to look at expanding the odor scrubber as well.
If I could, Mayor. For clarification, if all of vacant lots in the city, I believe the study that Tetra Tech did for the Saline Ventures proposed project, if all of the vacant parcels within the city were used, developed, I should say, developed at their highest and best use, we would not have enough capacity. So that...
Can you repeat that one more time?
If all of the vacant parcels within the city were to be developed to their highest and best use, whether it's an industrial or residential zone parcel, then we would not have enough capacity. That's what the study came up with.
I believe you're correct. It's been quite a while since I read that. I recall that.
And so, and then, I mean, of course, then water's another issue too, but again, but I will also say, the residential, the infill that we're having, residential doesn't add significant amounts, so that, I mean, it would take a lot of, a very large significant amount of only residential to get us up to where we need, beyond that point.
I think your verbiage about being developed to its full potential, there's an implication there that, not an implication, it's a simple fact, that what would put the most strain on the system would be heavy industry. Yes.
Absolutely. So I'm just making that as a... With the development that we're having now in residential, I mean, I feel pretty confident, as Bob states, that we're fine, that we're good. I just wanted to make that as a... Because that study is up there, that if they were developed to the highest capacity, then we would need to be moving quicker than I think we will need to be. And I will also say that my crystal ball broke a long time ago, so, you know, I mean, we certainly are being blessed with some great economic development here as of late, and we hope that continues on, but I can't tell you how long it's going to continue.
I just wrote... I was just going to tag out this question. So if we go from this size, what we currently have now, we're talking at 65 percent. If we move to 85 percent, we'll be over the head of that. It's additional 25 to 20 percent.
Again, it's the difference in the footprint of the plant at the flow.
So when you had mentioned that we were low to moderate, and that sort of good, is it in comparison to plants that are not in residential neighborhoods? Is that basically...
Right, right.
So it's not really truly an apples-to-apples?
Well, yeah, all of that, you know, it might be a confusing way to state what I mean. What I'm just trying to say is that the plant is... Appears to be being run very well. It's not a plant that is just, you know, producing horrible odors all the time, you know. It's a wastewater treatment plant, and in our experience, we've seen a lot worse. However, it doesn't take away anything of the fact that you have residents running your fence line. If it was out in the middle of nowhere, there would be no problem. But we have plants that we've been at that are out in the middle of nowhere that have all kinds of problems, because from miles away, you can get bad. And you just don't have... You don't have that situation here. But it's bad for you because you have residents on your fence line. That's the...
Okay. And can you just clarify, why would the carbon become so much more expensive?
That's a good question. So in both options, the media has to be replaced on some kind of basis, and it's based on the loadings coming in, hydrogen sulfide coming in. So right now, we have a basis of design. And our basis of design is that it's... The hydrogen sulfide is going to be five parts per million on average throughout the year. So that's how we base our cost estimate on. But carbon, if you increase that to 10 parts per million, now what we think at this point is the carbon will need to be replaced every two to three... Every two and a half to three years, the carbon will have to be replaced. But if you double the hydrogen sulfide coming in, now that carbon's going to have to be replaced every one and a half years. So now the cost of that option goes much higher. The difference in the biofilter is, the biofilter is not nearly as affected by what's coming in. It can treat moderate levels, even high levels of hydrogen sulfide, and you may only... No matter what, you may only have to replace that media every three to five years. It's not nearly as effective. So that's why the carbon is much more sensitive to what comes into it, the biological system is not. Did I answer your question?
I think so.
Okay.
I think I got the gist of it. Now, on the wood, does that compost itself, or would that wood be... Is that wood removed and new added to it?
That's right. So the wood begins to break down, microbes actually use it for food source, along with the odorous compounds coming through, and then it just breaks down and begins to turn into soil, basically is what it does. And then so between every three to five years, then, you know, we just had a client of ours in Indiana do this just two weeks ago. They had their own crew, used backhoes and dump trucks, and just removed it, and they ordered in new wood media. There's different companies that have the ability to do that, trucked it in, put it back in, and they did all the work themselves. So yes, it would be removed and replaced.
And what is done with it? Is it usable once it's been used?
Uh, yeah.
Or is it some sort of biohazard at that point, or...
No, no, the old... No, it... No, it becomes kind of just broken down, you know, like you have wood mulch in your flower bed, and every spring, you've got to put more on there because it just sends it breakdown. So it's typically landfill, but if you have a place where you can go and take it and, you know, just put it out on the ground, that's okay too. The pH is a little bit low on it, so I don't know if it'd be good for gardening, but it's typically landfill.
Is it chemically treated?
No, no, it's just wood.
It's just natural?
Yeah. The only reason the pH drops is that's the biological activity actually lowers the pH there. Do you want to know more about that?
No, I'm good. We can just stop there. Thank you then. So I do... Do you anticipate the smell to increase as the weather warms up? I mean, where is the trend in the smell?
Right. So with... As wastewater temperature increases, sulfide production in that wastewater increases. So for every, you know, 15 degrees Fahrenheit that the wastewater goes up, the sulfide production can double. That sulfide turns into hydrogen sulfide that gets released into the gas. So yes, as the water warms, we'd expect it to go up. But what we're basing all of this on is not just what we tested. It's what we tested and we said, okay, what do we predict? Because what we see today, what do we predict is going to be there when the water does increase to this? The only reason why we're hesitant in not saying this is the answer is because we've seen that sometimes we're wrong in that prediction. Sometimes it can just... We come back, and we've expected it to go up to this amount, and it's three times that, and we've not found a rhyme or reason to be able to exactly predict what happens in that long weather. So that's why I give myself a very instant fine print. We don't know what's going to happen in the long weather, and it's much better to have that data than to just go with the prediction.
And since we're talking two years out, is there something that can be done in the meantime to lessen the odor?
I think there are... I think there are some interim recommendations that could be... That can be done, and I don't know how... It just depends on how far you're wanting to go with it, but you could attempt to make some minor modifications to the existing scrubbers so that they're more efficient at this point.
That pause already rolled. I had inspected a month ago. I'm waiting for the field report to replace the ORP sensor as well as pH meter. That should give us a little better control. That's about all we can do, because there's certain structural issues we brought earlier.
Okay. And the other thing I was going to ask is, I know when I've gone out there, there's sort of that big, empty, fieldish area. Does that impact it? It's just sort of like a lone valley there, like where there's just... It's sort of like the nothingness land. I mean, what I'm getting at is like, can we plant trees? Would that help stop the wind, which would help control the odor spread? You know, I mean, is there anything that we can do?
Offsite and the box.
Yeah, I mean...
I would think by the time the trees had a chance to develop to a proper screen, we would have the odor scrubbers repaired by then, or the new scrubbers in. So I don't really know if we can do off-site to make it any better.
I think that's about it for me. So thank you very much.
Ms. Gerbou.
Thank you for your report. As a resident, I live on Henry Street, just down the road, so I appreciate all your hard work.
Closest.
And the closest, let's put it that way. So I appreciate your report. I don't understand at all, but that's okay. I really appreciate your presentation, because that helped a lot. I'm yes on the July 1st, for sure. How environmentally friendly are the... They sound like they're pretty... Like there's no...
No, there's no...
Chemicals.
No link with chemicals. I mean, right now, what you have is the corrosive chemicals. You're not going to have any of that. You're going to have carbon, if you have that option, or you're going to have wood mulch that's gone down the soil, if you have that option. That's what you have.
Okay. And then is there consideration, like if we have an industry that dumps a bunch of chemicals that they're not supposed to into the biofiltration system, is that going to throw off the whole thing, and then we're going to have odor issues again? Is there a benefit to the carbon that the biofiltration doesn't have because of that?
Oh, I see. No, you're not going to have an issue with that, because that's, you know, it... Most of that's going to remain in the liquid stream, they're going to pass through the plant through its treatment processes, but what comes out in the airstream above, I've never seen something significant enough that it killed off the biology of the biofilter.
Okay.
I see, it couldn't happen, I've just never seen it.
Okay. And then I also had a question about the, you know, if we're going to exceed the limits for the future, but I think that's kind of been answered at this point. And then one question about the timeline. Can we be working consecutively on the design work based on, like, say, we have... Okay, yes, we know we're going to have, you know, we're going to have to up to the capacity, or we're going to be pretty much where we are today. Is there potential to be consecutively working on the design work as we're finishing the rest of the study? Does that make sense? Is that going to be too expensive? I just want, hopefully, in a... To try and speed up the process.
Well, I think that question is prob... I mean, can it be done? Yes, that's my answer is yes, it can. I think I'd be a little hesitant to recommend that, just because that we might have to... Part of establishing the project, it would be, you know, what's the technology? That's number one. Where is it going to go, number two? And the technology affects where it goes, you know, so number one affects number two. And so I would be concerned that we begin to do this work and then have to go back and redo the work.
I guess my... Does it make sense, or is it more expensive to say, okay, if we go with carbon filter, we're going to do this? If we go with the biofilter, we're going to do this? So that we have those two options, and then once we know, when we get the data back, we already know which one we're going to go with and where it's going to go and how it's going to work...
Right.
Once the data comes in.
Right. I wouldn't recommend trying to do that. You know, I think... I don't know that you're going to gain a whole lot, I guess. That's the thing, because you're going to... I think some... going to, I think some, you know, broad questions could be answered at the beginning. But again, sometimes it's an iterative process is what I've seen. And it, it's back and forth of, okay, we decided this and we want to do it. No, we want to go, no, let's think about, let's put it, and then, and it's an iterative process to begin with. And, but you've got two different, completely different roads potentially here. And I, I would just, I have a feeling you might end up wasting some.
That's, it was a waste of time, like if it was going to be cost of.
Yeah. If we were a year away from the starting, something like that, I'd say maybe that's a, you know, but with it only being, you know, I, I, no, I, I don't, I wouldn't recommend that.
Okay. Um, and then, um, I guess it would, to tag along on Janet's question about what we can do in the interim, um, you've mentioned that if, that the odor scrubber, the current odor scrubbers are sort of contributing to the issue because they're shoving all of this stuff out into the air and, and it's traveling. Um, how bad would it be to turn them off? Like, how bad is the neighborhood going to get if they just turn them off? Or does that help? Or does it, is that an option?
We, we, it's been a rough two years. Uh, but what we've noticed in the past, I keep a very close eye on it, that if the air tech is off, people know it, the air tech's working fairly well. It's pulling eighty-five, treating eighty-five percent of the air. It's pulling it. The do all, on the other hand, um, we found, we shut it off and we didn't, it's going to sound bad, but we didn't, we just kept it at turn. We shut it down, but the odor complaints actually dropped.
That's, I guess that was my question. Is it, does it make sense to just turn that, to turn the do all off and just use the other one in the interim until we get something?
Again, it's, it's drawing odors that's at the facility anyway. Uh, so it's, it's kind of makes it more, it might make it worse at the site and maybe close by, but it would probably improve the neighborhoods.
Right. That's, but how, I guess my question is, how bad would it be right at the plant? I mean, is it going to be unbearable at the plant and for like the next door neighbors?
It's, 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 it's totally bearable for me, but I, you know, I can't speak for the neighbors.
And how far would that plume be, I guess? Does that make sense?
That would depend on the weather conditions. You know, if you, if you have, uh, typically in the summertime, you get these weather inversions. When it starts cooling off in the evening and the air will flip, you get this release of odor. I think if you looked at the odor logs, most of the complaints come between eight and ten or eleven a day.
Okay. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I share one thought real quick?
Please.
I meant to mention it. All the processes that we tested, they're, the, one that will, to someone who's lived there that would look over and see this process would go, oh, that, that's probably causing odor. It's, it's the two circular, um, tanks with water and then their secondary clarifiers. And, and they are not causing odors. And so, I just wanted to say that just because I know in looking at it, someone would look at, oh, that's probably needs to be covered and treated. And, and like we found in every other plant, the secondary clarifier is not, is not what causes odor. So, those would not be included in the, in the system. So, you can see those still, but they're not what's causing the odor.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. I, I say this, Bob. I say you experiment with maybe turning the do all odor scrubber on at some point in the, the not-too-distant future. Because based on the preliminary data, I really believe that that may be contributing and exacerbating the problems and spreading it, um, further than it would, would naturally have traveled.
I agree.
Okay. Uh, we've got to move on because we've only got fifteen minutes left for the capital improvement budgets. Uh, I will say this, however, um, there is broad consensus, in fact unanimous consensus, to proceed with the application for the low interest loan guarantees. Um, so, I, I would suggest that you all proceed. And I'm also hearing no objection to, um, I think this would be valuable, scheduling a little field trip to, what did you say? Kalamazoo and Grand Haven? Or was it South Haven?
You got it.
Grand Haven. I think try and find a day where we could hit both and whoever can go, goes, and who can't, can't. Staff can report back. Okay? Are there any additional questions before I let these gentlemen go? It's a very informative discussion. Jim, thank you. Brian, thank you. Bob, as always. Appreciate it. Okay.
Thank you.
Who wants to join us up front? Joanne, Mickey Joe, Jeff, Gary, Gary Rubel? And from both my council colleagues and from staff, I'd ask for brevity because we do have less than fifteen minutes. So, whatever comments can wait, be asked or addressed offline, that would be, that would be ideal. And I should have noted, I believe we are having a little bit of an issue with the heat in council, in the council chambers today.
Ricky's in here.
I think it feels good, but don't come over to my house because I'm at kind of a perpetual sixty degrees. I find people don't stay long that way. Who's in that middle chair? Is that Mickey Joe or is that Gary?
Gary.
Jeff, you want to start?
Sure. So, last time we were looking at, uh, charts of the predicted remaining service life at various investment levels. Um, maybe we'll quickly run through those against us. I'm starting on page thirteen of the packet. This is a model prediction of the condition of our street network over the next ten years if we spend, um, actual identified sources of money, uh, our, uh, some of our Act 51 money, uh, federal grants that we very reliably get. Um, and as you can see, there's a fairly steady decline. There's a couple of years in here where things go up, where we're either spending fund balance or we give another federal grant, then we can spend a little bit more money. Uh, but the overall trend is down. Um, page fourteen is, um, what would happen if you spent no money on, on local reconstruction. Uh, much steadier decline, a more significant decline, you know, we're down to a negative twelve versus about a negative two and a half in the other strategy. So, then the next couple of pages are dollar levels that, um, either maintain the status quo or actually lead to some improvement. So, at roughly nine hundred thousand dollars a year, that about holds us where we are. Um, and then if you go to page sixteen, this is only a hundred thousand dollars more a year. Granted, it's a million dollars to talk about. It's a lot of money. But, um, that, just that little bit of extra money starts to create a slow upward trend in the quality of the roads. And then, if you go to page seventeen, at one point two million dollars per year, we have very strong, steady increase in the overall network quality. Um, this one, you know, this would end up with us somewhere in that, um, you know, seven-ish pauser ring on average, um, which is really pretty significant. And, um, now, going beyond that year, that would likely level out. Because you, you know, you get to a point and you can only keep things so new with so much more. But that would be a very, um, high level of, of network quality at the one point two million dollar level. Um, the next couple of pages are some current photographs of, of streets with a little bit of description of their, uh, their maintenance history and their, their current conditions. Um, I, you know, no surprise to anyone here. There are, uh, a number of roads out there that are in pretty bad shape. Um, it still does surprise me when I'm traveling around the area, you know, I look at other communities and I start, you know, I feel a lot better. Uh, but, but that door's not on. Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't change the fact that our, uh, our network is not, is not really where we want it. And over the last, um, several years or so, it's been in somewhat decline due to the, due to our funding situation. Uh, I think after those photos, I need to turn this over to somebody else to talk about the capital improvement plan on page twenty.
Is that Joanne?
Yeah, starting on.
Joanne, wait, wait till you get the microphone from, uh, from Mr. Ford. Thank you.
Okay, starting on page twenty, um, is a list of major street projects that have been identified. Um, we're trying to incorporate a six-year capital improvement plan, starting with FY eighteen through FY twenty-three. Uh, the costs are broken out by year. Um, there's a funding source outside of normal operating revenue, back one fifty money that we get, other miscellaneous income that we get, grants, um, the county millage that we're going to get for five years. So, that's in the funding source column. And then there's a net expense. So, the, this page just identifies projects and anticipated costs or net costs to the city. Uh, the second page is just another format, um, just highlighting, uh, the projects by year. Also on page twenty-one, there's a little bit more information about the financial picture, um, taking into account a six-year projection on regular revenues and expenditures. We show, uh, if you're looking at just the major, the major street portion, at the bottom, there's a forecasted fund balance that's available for projects. Um, and then it nets out the projects that are listed up above. And it shows for major street projects that by FY twenty, we run out of money. And, um, major streets help out a little bit because, um, Soft Trail is currently paying back the advance that they had several years ago. That we can expect two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars by FY twenty-one to help offset some of that loss. But, um, uh, major streets does have a little bit more money than local streets. Uh, so, if they use the Soft Trail money, that they're, they're in a better position. The next, uh, page twenty-two is the list of the local street projects, again, FY eighteen through twenty-three, um, funding sources, offsetting the costs, and, uh, how much we would need to spend for each year for these identified projects. And, uh, twenty-three, again, is, is the, brings in more of the financial picture. It shows, um, the available fund balance, um, where we would, again, we would run out of money in FY nineteen. And we wouldn't be able to, to, can you, we, actually, the projects that we start eighteen, we'd be finishing in nineteen, but we wouldn't have money to actually fund, to finish the projects. And so, local streets is hurting a little bit more than, than major streets. Um, the page twenty-four is just a consolidated financial picture. Um, top section is major streets. It shows just, um, ordinary revenue that's coming in, offset by, um, ordinary expenditures. Uh, so, we have a net revenue. Um, FY eighteen, we projected a hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and nineteen, three hundred and forty-five, uh, forty-three thousand, four oh eight. Yep, it's below five hundred thousand dollars until you get to FY twenty-three. And that.
Where are we, sir?
Twenty-four?
Yeah.
Twenty-four?
Oh, there.
Oh, twenty-four. Yeah, that's the financial picture. Oh, okay, yeah, sorry. So, it, it shows that net revenues for major streets, um, is consistently below five hundred thousand dollars to use for projects. Now, there'll be funding that comes in for grants or, but of course, if we don't do the project, we won't get that money. So, this is just straight in, income that comes in from Act 51 money, um, and other state, um, uh, activities that they come in for reimbursements for other maintenance that we do on, on our local streets. So, local streets, again, is, is in the middle section. Um, it gets a lot less money from the state. Um, it's, doesn't even go over two hundred thousand in any of those, in any of those six years. Um, the combined street funds is the, the bottom section of page twenty-four, and it's showing an anticipated net revenue each year of, you know, three hundred and six thousand, four hundred thousand, you know, upwards of six hundred and eighty-five thousand. But if you go back to the, um, graphs that Jeff provided, you know, if we're spending just what we're bringing in, our streets decline over the years. So, we actually have to pump into about nine hundred thousand to make it a little bit, go back to that one little diagram. Like, nine hundred thousand, looks like if we keep a steady pace, you know, nothing gets worse, but nothing improves. But of course, we're not even getting, you know, five hundred thousand dollars a year in net revenue. So.
Anything else, Joanne?
Um, no. We've got the question. Does anyone have any other questions?
Uh, any other comments from staff?
Uh, just some, some quick macro comments.
Make, make them very quick, Mr. Ford. Make sure you have the microphone from Mr. McDowell.
Okay, just a, just a few bullet lines here, bullet, bullet lines. Uh, the reason why on page six, you'll, you'll see that we're at seventy, roughly seventy-seven percent are in the fair or better range. One of, some ma, major reasons for that are, uh, since nineteen ninety-five, uh, majority of the projects we did do were reconstructed with a new limestone basin drainage. So, that, that helps reduce future cost for rehab. Uh, the other thing in our favor is, uh, Jeff.
What page are you on?
These, these are my notes, just macro.
Oh, he's referring, okay, page six.
I'm off to page six now, but, uh, the other reason that we're, we're in good shape is, uh, Jeff's got excellent, uh, annual maintenance program, crack patching, crack filling, uh, surface treatments of that sort. So, that holds it together. Uh, the other thing in our favor is that the counties had that, had, they had two eighty-three, and then at least four years of the half mill. That will help with the local street side. The reason we're burdened on local street side is that all the grant funds, only our L's will be used on major streets. Uh, the other one, of course, the benefit is the increase in the Act 51 recently. See that in, later on in twenty seventeen. Um, the other big benefit is that last ten years due to the economic downturn, we have not, we, we used to gain one or more miles a year in streets from subdivisions. All dedicated as pri, uh, public streets, used to get one or more miles a year. Last ten years, we've not inherited or had to take over, you know, another ten miles of streets. Um, then, uh, right now, we're in the process, or somewhere in the grant process of one point four million in grant funds, which of course requires city match. Now, we have city match for some of that this year. We hope to have that for next year at least. If we need money for next year, we should get the match for that STPU grant that would be done in twenty nineteen. And, uh, that's it.
Very good. What I'd ask is, uh, we, we were literally, you know, the seconds here, Paul. Uh, let's start with you, Ms. McClellan. If you have just one question I asked that you rebriefed, we'll start with you and with Mr. Rubel. Obviously, we'll continue this discussion, but I've got transition to public comments. So, if you have a question, now would be the time to ask it.
I don't actually have a question.
Okay?
I need your answer.
Ms. Dillon?
Yep, I'm going to speak over.
Okay.
Just real quick, County Village, seventeen is two hundred and sixty thousand. The steps dropping down to a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-six thousand. Why is there a fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty?
County Village, we're getting the full hundred percent with the FY seventeen projects in the last year. In your proposal, we have only eighty percent.
Because the twenty percent goes to, goes to non-motorized for the county.
Right. We could get that some of the dollars.
That's not guaranteed. We have to apply for it. You have to compete for it.
We compete with any other municipality, the county is also applying for the dollars.
A lot of our projects have sidewalks. It's like, according to his partner, so we could apply for that money.
It's unlike any other award for just regular sidewalks.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
No questions.
No questions? Mr. Harb?
No questions.
No questions?
Nothing.
No? Okay, very good. Thank you. We'll continue this discussion. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Uh, we come down to public comments on Gilman meetings. Actually, the citizens may come forward at this time. They can request the city council. Public comment period will be limited to previous person. Anyone would like, would like to speak is requested without required. This stage is her name and address. Are there any citizen comments on the two items that we discussed at our work meeting? No, but the chair would seek a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-one. Moved by your boss, seconded by McClellan. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Want to say nay? Aye, seven.